The Census is constitutionally mandated to occur every ten years. The results of the Census affect funding received by states, counties, and cities. An example would be our road use money. It's based on data acquired by the Census. All information acquired by the Census Bureau is strictly for statistical purposes. No personal information is released, not even to the President. We are informed that this is just a short form of nine questions this year. So it's not a great big long packet you've got to fill out. It's just nine questions. Forms will be released in March of 2020 with self-reporting to be done by April. And then after April, if it's not turned in, they'll start trying to locate people through phone calls, knocking doors. And we hope everyone cooperates to try to get the most accurate count possible. So we get what we have coming to us, hopefully. So money-wise and whatnot. We have three seats up for election and the mayor's seat as well in the election November 5th. Papers can now be taken out here at City Hall to get the required number of signatures needed to appear on the ballot. And turn, instead of turning them in at the courthouse now, we're to turn them in back here at City Hall. Paperwork can be turned in no earlier than August 26th. And the cutoff time is at 5:00 PM on September 19th to appear on the ballot. This is a great opportunity for anyone interested in shaping the direction of Blakesburg for the future. As I informed you last month, properties inspected last fall were given a July 31st deadline to be brought up to code. They were to be re-inspected by our city inspector, Steve Bond. I contacted Steve on August 2nd to inquire about when the re-inspection would be taking place. Steve's been having some health issues and he wants to, wants to help us and see this through when he started. He told me, give him a couple of weeks and he's going to, going to be down sometime to the middle to the end of August and give us his recommendation on how we proceed with these properties. So sometime here in the next couple of weeks, he'll be back. Been fighting the nasty seaweed. So he's working on getting over his treatment and everything. But he has not forgot about us and will be down to tell us how he feels that we need to proceed, that we need to proceed with any of these properties. So that's all I have from my mayor's report. We have Sheriff Phillips in the house tonight. He's going to give us the sheriff's report.
Thanks, Mayor. I think that we've had a couple of calls here the last month or last couple of weeks with some people finding their, one was their toolbox was open on the truck and they went out that morning. Another one had a door. I think one of the deputies found a door open on the cars here in town when they drove through. Don't know if something's going on. I know this morning we had one incident east of town. Somebody's car went through and they'd been seeing the black Dodge Avenger around. So if you haven't seen a black Dodge Avenger with maybe a couple of rascals in it, you know, give us, see if you can get a plate and give me a call. So we're kind of looking for that. Last week, Chief Deputy Marty and I went up to Stu Hanson, picked up our Dodge Durango, which is going to be our K-9, one of our K-9 units. Dropped it off at Raycom Impella. They're the ones that does all our equipment installs. And then the other dog ended up in Iowa on Friday. If you'd like to see a picture of it, I have one after the council meeting. And then I have a picture of the other one too. So I have those. And then also last week, we got an inflatable boat that was delivered to us. We do respond to river rescues on the river as well as search for anybody who made a tumble loss on the river. We had an incident here a couple of weeks ago where a guy and gal were out on the river and the current got him. He was able to make it shore, but she ended up out on a log jam. As most of you probably know, the fire department and the Tumwa also responds with us. They had, they've lost two boats here in the last couple of years. And they have an inflatable. And when they went out there to that gal, we went out, went out ahead of them. But it's just that river's pretty unstable with those flat-bottomed boats. So I talked to supervisors and got an inflatable, just, just like the one the city has. So we just got one of those last week. There's a big, a lot of movement of equipment going on with the boats and stuff because we met in the spring to see what our assets were along the river with Eddieville, with Tumwa, and then Eldon. Eldon didn't have a boat. So we had two John boats. We gave them one of ours to Eldon. And then that allowed me to then take this inflatable on. And then the city fire department lost their boat there last, last winter, late fall. And so they got a new boat that hopefully provides some more stable out there for them. And so they had to get a new trailer for their boat. So they asked us if we wanted to take their trailer because the county had provided money for this boat to them. So we were getting their trailer, which they kept their inflatable on top and their John boat on the bottom. So that's how ours is going to be set up. And this inflatable allows us to, where we can carry it back in there. Be kind of a tough carry, but you know, four guys could do it easily or obviously six would be much easier. But we can carry it to a pond or anywhere that we need to, to utilize it. So that's all I have. I don't, for some reason, we had 93 inmates in jail this morning and we've been running around 70, 75. So it was kind of a busy weekend. I've seen there was 52 hooked in throughout the weekend. So wow, plenty going on.
We don't care about them a lot.
What's that?
The rate at that hotel looked like it dated you guys a lot.
If you guys, like I said, you see a Dodge Avenger around, you know, grab us a plate and give me a call. We'll follow up with it. We obviously won't say, you know, we got this from the mayor of Blakesburg. What are you doing? We'll keep your name.
I appreciate it.
Thanks, Don. Definitely be on the lookout for that.
Public comment, I won't forget this one. Remember, public comment, we limit that to two minutes per person about agenda items only.
Hey, Jason, can we change that time to about 1:00?
Yeah.
Okay, because I got to go to town that morning with Chuck and I got to pick stuff up and...
Sure. Yeah, 1:00 is fine. Will that give you time?
I should be back by then for sure. Somebody here is going to be spending the next two days filling water balloons. I got 1,100 of them, so.
Awesome. I'm going to get pelted. All right. Nope, that's a good deal. Yeah, 1:00 for the water balloon fight in the park. Okay, last month, we'll go move on to old business if there is no other public comment.
Yeah, we talked about my sidewalk in front of my house, right?
We kind of did. We discussed it. What was, what exactly happened on that, Gary? Was it the city, you said the city dug it up or what was?
The city dug it up and we paid, you'll find a receipt somewhere, I think we paid them $2,500 because they were looking for problems with our sewer and found out that the sewer all came down from that street, Hickory Street, and turns right there and it would back up into our house. But they found a broken tile, I think. But anyway, it was a little daddy's trenching and he put the sidewalk right back in. He didn't let anything settle or anything. And he said if it wasn't okay to let him know. But I've got the bill at home somewhere where we paid, I think, $2,500 to the city and it really wasn't even our problem, but, but we paid it. You'll probably find it in the receipts.
I hope so.
Years ago.
We'll look, we'll figure out.
I've looked through the bill. But anyway, it's dangerous, you know, for people that walk by or ride bikes or anything. And I know sidewalks are supposed to be property owner's responsibility.
But you weren't the ones that broke it.
We didn't dig it up. Right.
Right.
And actually, it would probably just needs to be lifted up and something put under because they put it in and it just, you know, went like that because they didn't have time to set it.
Yeah, I've looked at it. It's going to have to be tore out and report, but it's just the way it is. But especially if you guys have paid something on that, you know.
Well, I think if you look, I think we paid, I found the bill the other day when I was looking for something else, but I'd have to look for it. I think it was $2,500. We paid for the, for all the sewer work there, so.
Okay. And we'll, we'll look into that and we'll see what we got to do to them to make it right for sure. Do a little more digging.
It was when Robin was the city clerk. I think maybe Randy was mayor. I'm not sure.
Okay, so we're looking at probably like 20,000?
I'm not sure, but it's been that long.
Not long, it's been a while.
Getting promises and promises and, and then when the last council was there, they, they said they just didn't have money to fix it and so.
Okay, yeah, we'll check it out. We'll see what we can get, see what we can get pretty well and make it right. So, all right, any other public comments? We'll head and move on. Old business. Last month, we discussed the issue on South Street. I talked to the county engineer to come down, I believe it was the Thursday after the meeting. He came and looked at it and he's given us a recommendation that we, he said he'd do it sooner rather than later, try to get it done. And by the time the harvest, we start getting machinery and stuff in there, he says it needs a new culvert. He goes, it's, there's definitely a washout underneath the road that's going to cause the road to collapse. He even priced the culvert for us and it was going to cost 1,900. And then we need to see about having somebody do the work. I think Jerry, are we going to contact Chad? Are we going to contact Chad about that? Because if the bid comes in, Chad's bid was coming under, how much was it? Was it 20,000 or 20?
We were hoping for under 20.
Yeah. Then we could just go forward with it. It needs done or it's going to be really, I think it needs done. There are going to be bad things. I mean, that road, we get a tractor or something hauling stuff in and it just collapses on it. Because it is in not, not a shape. I mean, the engineer, Jerry's looked at it, the engineers looked at it. It, it's bad. It's something that needs done. I mean, even, and I would butcher Jeff's last name, but Jeff, he, he was very nice, very helpful, but he, he recommended that we get it done.
Would he kind of give you a price of what the county would, screw the hell up with me, what they would expect that to be bid at 1:30 or anything like that? I'll, I'll get ahold of Chad and see if I can't get another estimate from somebody.
How to contact Lathrop, say, is Eric arrested too?
No, we'll talk to David and Chad and see if either one of them could do it. That would be a good idea.
If it's slow enough, we wouldn't be recording, I think, am I right? I better double check. Slow enough, we're not recording a bid if it wouldn't hurt to get a couple.
But the way that was cobbled down there with the 16-inch and the 18-inch or the two 18s or 16s?
It's got a 16 going into a 24.
Yeah, that empties out.
And it's right in the middle of the road where it changes, so.
And that's pretty comfortable. Right where all our sewer runoff runs right to that. And that's where everything goes. So it's, it's really important that we get it.
There's three trees and the trees are kind of growing through the, down along sides. And that's maybe what's grown into that pass up spot.
Another thing he said was the trees, the trees need to go to. He didn't say that while we were down there, that we just needed it. Here we were, I was kind of racking my brain thinking about we were going to have to cut the tree down. I figured if we're going to have a whole brazier down there, then probably just take the trees out that way would be...
And the only other thing, which I'll, I'll contact Mike and Chad both, but we were going to, we talked about maybe getting Chad up, like we made him payments on that work that he'd done for the other past, 14 years ago. And see if he wouldn't work with us where we can make payments and it wouldn't hurt us quite as bad that we could pay on it out of our water every month.
The road use, road use.
Or road use.
Yep.
That would kind of help us a little bit too. And I think he would do that, just...
But as you guys could see by looking at your financials, that if he doesn't work with us and allow us to make payments on that, that our road use money is pretty well shot for the year.
So I'd be safe in saying that if this is, I'm going to be optimistic for a change. It may not be as bad as I'm thinking. If it goes 20, basically, we just say there's not going to be much work going on the streets this year. Is that pretty safe to say?
That's, that would be pretty safe to say. I don't know. Because we've also had discussions and we found a report up here from 1983 that talked about Blakesburg and the streets. And they were going to, they were going to pave streets, but even back then, they talked about the drainage problem, how without proper drainage, we were just going to be kind of throwing money away on... And that's something that Jeff talked about when he was here as well, the county engineer. We talked to him about seal code and you know how we have all the streets seal code and have a plan to seal code all the streets? And he says, as long as you're just driving cars on seal code, it's great. He goes, but with us being a farming community, he says it's just really expensive form of dust control. And that was his exact quote. So I don't know if we want to think about, I know nobody really wants to go back to gravel roads, but in order for us to build the roads back up so they could seal code them if they wanted to or do something going forward, I mean, maybe gravel streets to put the crown on them, to dig the ditches, to do the, I mean, it, it's not an overnight fix. It's going to be something, it's going to be a long-term process, I think. That'll be going on long after I'm not sitting in this chair anymore.
In 83, when they were talking, some storm service put in, right on my memory. In 1983, the cost to do the work that they were advised to do then was just right at a million dollars.
Yep. And so now with inflation and whatnot, it would be kind of really expensive.
There's a lot of these, like you say, secondary streets that are just cars and they've gone pretty much embargoed that I hate to see us go to rock on some of those. Some of the ones where we got a lot of traffic, we're probably going to have to look at it. There are several around here that are actually not too bad as some shake, you know, I mean...
Well, that's what, when we had to look at the streets, like South Street is not too bad, but it could be sealed now with not much patching within a year or two. It's going to be real bad because of the truck traffic and stuff going on for any year.
Sounds like we're going to show up and get in there.
And that was the other thing there on, on South Street on the culvert repair. I talked to Wayne Hewitt. I went down and talked to him at the supervisor's office not long after I talked to the super, or the engineer. And for whatever reason, that block or that section of South Street from the tracks that goes east is not included in the 2080 agreement as a farm-to-market road. And I said, I understand that that does us no good now. I said, but if we repair that, what are the chances of amendment of that 2080 including that? Wayne talked pretty favorably, like he thought that could, something that could be done.
Well, see, I fought that with you. That gravel road is farm-to-market. It leads nowhere.
Right.
Everybody goes down South Street. They don't turn semis around at the rail tracks. So everything that comes in from the west goes out to east and vice versa.
And that's why he was, I mean, that's why I said when I talked to him about it, he was willing to, I mean, Wayne, Wayne was willing to discuss it and us talk about adding that to it. Like I said, it wouldn't do us any good with the repair we've got going on now. But going forward after that, we get it put in. So if we have another problem, that, that would give maybe some county help there.
If I remember that agreement, like I said, I couldn't find it the other day when I was looking for it. But I, if I remember, everything under the street, even the farm-to-market is ours. So I might want to look at that.
Look into that too.
Because, you know, we'd still be on the hook for this culvert.
And that's what I said, I mean, this one's ours.
Basically, they're doing maintenance, but that's a big, that's a pretty good chunk of street to get done that we don't have to pay for. You know, it's either we're going to have to do something in the next year, so, or, or it's going to be gravel.
And that's what, I mean, again, this, putting the culvert in is going to eat most of our road use repair for this year. So then we just, we probably ought to start getting a plan put together.
Did they say if we put the culvert in, then they would look at that as far as them being?
Going forward, amendment to include that as part of that agreement because it should be, like I said, I told him exactly what you said. They don't turn around, they go, it probably should have been included in that to begin with. And then he was, and he, he said he didn't, he knew exactly what I was talking about. And he said, yeah, that doesn't make a lot of sense. He goes, because they had no room to turn around there at the elevator. He said, that's got to be, so, so Wayne, I mean, he was kind of on board with what we were talking, you know?
And basically, we've been working on our grade and drainage systems, which I've got some pipe and stuff to build to try to clean the culverts out, which I think will work if we got the mini excavator to work with it. But the dump truck's been broke down for a month now.
Dump truck's coming back this week. I talked to Eric yesterday. That's what he, he got the, said when he was trying to start it, he gets smells electrical and there was smoke and there, you know, something burn up in there. So he got the computer and you know how it's always running kind of rough and kind of, he was trying to fix that. And I think he was kind of making it a bit awful more than, than, but he is, he said he had one last thing he was going to try to get it to run smoother. He was going to try that today. And I asked him, I said, so you've had it for part of Oz, it's going to cost us a normal leg? And he said, he gave me, he said that the computer was only labor, whatever he figured it'd be under $500, right at 500 bucks.
Yeah, it's been a month. But Chad was kind of making payments on that, use of that, which if we can, you know, a lot of the street, if we can get a bunch more dray work done, I mean, that's a lot of, that's something at least we're doing for the streets.
Right. And that's, like I said, I think well, I, I, we were talking, somebody was talking about it. And he said that if we would have, the work that Jerry was doing on the ditches and digging the rig work and whatnot was, if we would have contracted that or hired that, it would have cost us thousands upon thousands of dollars. So Chad was using the escalators.
Basically, it's going to be a little cheaper than to come actually camber into those without getting a lot of insurance now, so. And so it's a bunch of that. And that's, he told me he would work payments on that. So I mean, even going forward, like on that tube, I think that's something that we'd save us. So at least we're getting something done on the streets and I'm planning on to start doing a little bit more of that. And we're basically cleaning the tubes out, but we've got that first, so.
Truck should be back, back, say, in the next couple of days, so that's...
You sold me, I ruined it. Guys got a bit of overalls. Everything I'm reading, 1983, and everything you're saying is before we do anything on the streets, the drainage has got to be fixed. We're just doing money that we need.
I guess that's all I had on street discussions is that I think we're all in agreement that that project needs to be done sooner rather than later. So we'll deal with, give Chad and Mike, see if we can get that, get, get a couple, couple bids and then get that going.
Basically, that engineer talked about since there's an 18, a 16, you know, coming the inlet side, basically changing that to a 32-inch, one 32-inch.
I think it was 36. Yeah, 36. He thought we needed a 36-inch tube going under the roof. A 36, 36 inches by 60 foot, I think.
Something, we had some old shots of, of something that showed the amount of water that come off of that corner anyway. And I think that's what it called for was 36-inch.
Yeah.
I think, yeah. What he said, I think he said he wouldn't bid his license on anything under 36.
So we'll move on then to new business. I don't see Tracy in the audience tonight. She might have stood us up, but the corner vulnerable is coming up, September 20th through the 22nd, I believe, correct?
22nd.
22nd, yeah, 20th through the 22nd. We got in front of you a map of what they usually do for street closings. I am going to recommend that the block, the half a block between the community building and Main Street be left open so that the beer bank has access to getting back to unload. I have access to get out of my house to work and whatnot. It seems like we, every once in a while, people have wanted to butt heads over blocking that alley off. I think we'll block it off with the community building and, and just leave that little half a block of Cass Street open. Everything else is pretty standard, what they usually always close off. I was kind of hoping she'd be here because I know they're not getting as many rides and whatnot and see if we needed to, if we could just block this one off right up here at the corner of State and State Street.
Where are you talking at, yeah?
Cass Street and the community building are just from the, the west side of the community building to Cass Street. Leave that alley open so everybody can get out and in if they need to.
I was going to say, I think that was the way it was last year.
I think so too. I think so. I think that's right.
Barricades went down to the community building for the car show.
Yeah, yep. And that'd be Saturday morning, get a car show. We'll get them closed off about probably 7:00 in the morning or so on Saturday. But then by City Hall, that was the one I didn't know. Where City Hall and High Street, usually that, they, we go all the way down almost to Larry's house to block that one off. If they weren't having rides, I didn't know why we couldn't just block it off out here. Would that be fine? Okay. Are you on that community too? Okay, all right. Jay is here. So we'll just plan on blocking that off right up here at State and High Street. So people who drive up into City Hall and everything.
They might block it off a little further east if they have the backup racism.
Oh, okay.
Just a short time.
A short time. And then, and we can move the barricades for that. So I guess I would, I would entertain a motion to allow the corner vulnerable to block off the streets, the 20th through the 22nd. I think we actually do block off of the streets for, when we kind of take care of it, to close some, from some street closures on, on that weekend.
Is that the right date? Because on here, it's showing the 18th and 19th.
Yeah, that's from 2015. Yeah, so that, that was the last one we had where we had a map that was drawn out and everything. So it's, it's usually basically about the same. Like I said, if we do, there are just those alterations or whatever. I, I don't see anybody having a problem with it. If they do, we can talk to them next month at the meeting because it'll be before they come to. So.
I'll make a motion, we approve the street closing for the upcoming Fall Festival.
Motion by...
I'll second.
Second by who? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, resolution 19.8.12.1, approved street financial report. So we've got our financial report in order. You know, I've been here earlier, they didn't organize all this stuff. Now it's flipped up to now again. There it is, I got it right here. Let me see. We are closing the year with, I'm like, can you help me for a minute on that?
We started out with the 34,155. Our revenues were 27,594. And then county of 27,85. Our total revenue of 3379. And then our expenditures, we had for maintenance, 19,747. Snow removal, 11,10. And Gary's, Gary and Larry's wages, 21,68. Probably would have been called Gary at that point. So total expenditures of 23,025 with an ending balance of 34,077. Sorry, I read that on the line. Ending balance, 31,799.
I will take a motion to approve resolution 19.8.12.1.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 19.8.12.1, city street financial report for, from July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019.
Motion by...
Second.
Second by Smith. Roll call, Chisman.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Jerry Van Dorn.
Aye.
Toad.
Aye.
Kimberly Van Dorn.
Aye.
Okay, and now we get into our garage of building permits. Awesome, now they're getting the building permits and people picking up stuff up. First we have Harold Allison, permit, lean tube on, add to the east end of the lean tube on his garage. Starting date soon as possible, completion date as soon as possible. I recommend we approve Mr. Allison's going permit. I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Mr. Allison's building permit.
Motion by Kimberly Van Dorn?
I'll second.
Second by Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's Heather. Building permit for Mark Pruitt, the bill will lean to on the east side of the garage, estimated date of completion thirty days, used for storage there, part of the garage that we just approved him to build last month. So I would recommend we approve this, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve building permit for Mark Pruitt.
Motion by Jerry Van Dorn?
I'll second.
Second by Kimberly Van Dorn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is that guy, he's gonna get back from the job?
Yes, yeah, I think so too. Okay, building permit for Jeff Walker. Jeff's gonna put a fence up right back, kinda out his side door there, safety for the dogs and the grandchild. Larry went down, talked to him, got the specs, everything's good, we're all in, in the property lines. I recommend we approve Jeff's building permit for his fence.
I make a motion to approve the building permit for Jeff Walker's fence.
I will second.
Motion by Chisholm, second by Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have the building permit for Jerry Van Dorn, adding in addition to the west side of the house on the residence. I would recommend we approve the building permit for Jerry Van Dorn.
I make a motion to approve Jerry Van Dorn's building permit.
Motion by Chisholm?
I will second.
Second by Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and we have a building permit for Gary and Jane Underwood at the west end of the lot, just a shelter over the hot tub. As soon as approved, we can get started and the completion date will depend on the weather. I recommend we approve Gary and Jane's building permit.
I will motion we approve Gary and Jane's building permit.
Motion by Smith?
I'll second.
Second by Coe, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Awesome. And now, uh, there we are going to resolution nineteen dot eight dot twelve dot two, transfer funds from local option sales tax to general, just kinda their monthly deal that we've been doing since we, that vote passed in November and we've been able to do that, transferring twenty-six ninety, twenty-five dollars. I will take a motion to approve transferring money from the lots to the general.
I make a motion to approve resolution nineteen dot eight dot twelve dot two, transfer of lost funds to the general.
Motion by Chisholm?
Second.
Second by Smith, roll call, Chisholm?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Jerry Van Dorn?
Aye.
Coe?
Aye.
Kimberly Van Dorn?
Aye.
Resolution eighteen, nineteen dot eight dot twelve dot three, city hall hours, so coming up for the fall term of Indian Hills. I'm just gonna work some split shifts and hours will be Monday from eight to twelve and then from three-thirty to five, Tuesday from eight to twelve, Wednesday from eight to twelve and then again from three-thirty to five and then eight to twelve and eight to twelve thirty on Friday. I would accept a motion to approve resolution nineteen dot eight dot twelve dot three, city hall hours.
I now motion to accept nineteen dot eight dot twelve dot three, city hall hours.
Motion by Jerry Van Dorn?
I'll second it.
Second by Chisholm, roll call, Chisholm?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Jerry Van Dorn?
Aye.
Ace and Coe?
Aye.
Kimberly Van Dorn?
Aye.
I will entertain a motion to a Jerry.
I make a motion to a Jerry.
Motion by Coe.
I'll second.
Second by Kimberly Van Dorn, all in favor?
Aye.
That's a wrap. Oh.